All right. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, April 16th special meeting and we are here to receive public comment before a closed session. Do we have anyone to make public comment?
Yes, please. Dave Mazer. And I'd like to start just second since there's nobody else commenting and I've got a few things to say. Could I not be on the three minute clock? I'd happily be on about a five minute clock.
Why don't you start and we'll see how far you get.
Okay. Yeah. First of all, you know, as I said at the regular council meeting, I think it's unfortunate that we're in a situation where it's the city of Arcata versus the supporters of Measure M. I really wish that the way this had come down was that rather than be somehow forced by people who objected to the flag being on top and feeling that you had to avoid a lawsuit at all costs, that the city had just allowed the flag to be on the top. And then if there was a suit, you would have been on the side of defending the right of the people to have the flag on top because that's what people voted for. So I think that's unfortunate, but I realize we can't change that. I just kind of wish it were the other way because generally I think people in the city enjoy having the earth flag on top. We are going to appeal. We as the supporters of Measure M. And just to give you a rough idea of what that's about and why we feel an appeal is appropriate. First of all, the flag is a symbol. And so anything you do with the flag is basically a form of speech. And then, and a ballot initiative, which was regulating what we do with the flag, is another form of speech. So we kind of have two situations of speech encased in each other. And I want to make clear that although the judge didn't seem to realize this, this is not government speech. This is speech of the people. It's a ballot initiative. So it's not government speech. So it is not unprotected because of being government speech. It's the voice of the people. Now I'm very clear from having been on the council that we're a general law city and the city of Arcata, no city can, the city council can't pass laws that are contrary to state law. However, the city council did not act on this except to certify the vote. The council certified the vote, but the council did not draw up the initiative, support the initiative, do anything like that. So it is not the speech of the council or the speech of the city. It's the speech of the people of the city, which we feel is protected speech. And also we're not the attorney, you know, the judge said that yes, you can change state law with a ballot initiative, but it has to be a statewide initiative. Well, we're not trying to change the state law. What we're trying to say is that we, the people of Arcata, have decided that we would like to fly the earth flag on top within the city of Arcata.
Thanks, Steve.
And then
We're gonna
I have about 30 more seconds.
Let's get it.
Okay. And so, yes, thank you. So, you know, what I'm really hoping, we are going to appeal. And what I'm hoping is that for the duration of the appeal, that you will decide to continue to let the earth flag fly on top as chosen by the people. And I don't think there's any great legal threat to you as a council or to the city if you do that. And I think it's what the people voted for when they approved Measure M. So please leave the earth on top. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment? All right, then I'm gonna adjourn us into closed session. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna get started after that. Sorry to cut that short. Thank you for attending the special meeting of the Arcata City Council to set goals for the 2024-25 fiscal year. The council just met in closed session on the legal case City of Arcata versus citizens in support of Measure M and made the following motion. By unanimous vote, the city council directed staff to adhere to the Superior Court of California's ruling that flying the earth flag at the top of the city flagpoles is against state law and to reorder the flags to place the national flag on top, followed by the state flag. The city will be releasing background information tomorrow to provide more depth framework for this decision. The city council truly validates the ballot proposition process and yet must follow both state law and court decisions. All right, we're gonna move on to public comment. At this special meeting, we will take public comment now at the beginning of the meeting and only for items that are on the agenda. If you are interested in providing public comment on the preliminary five-year revenue projections, the draft language for proposed transactions and use tax ballot measure, the city capital improvement program, or this year's recommendation for the open space, parks, and trails special tax, this is your chance. Please line up at the podium or raise your hand to Zoom now. We will now take in-person comments first and then move on to Zoom. We will not go back and forth, so please line up if you're in person. And again, just remind everybody, special meeting, one chance for public comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I guess nobody's showing up. So as far as expenditures for financial year 2024 to '25, capital improvement programs, 45-12, this is the Eighth and Ninth Street improvements. This is a topic that I've talked about quite a bit in the last two years, starting with, I think, when you approved $750,000 for public outreach and engineering, which at the time I thought was pretty excessive. And I bring this up because we just had a, with the planning commission, this was brought up like two sessions ago, and they thought it was a great idea for K Street for public outreach and engineer to use our own engineering. And they thought $8,000 was pretty excessive to be doing all that for K Street. And I had to remind them, well, we approved on the city council $750,000 for Eighth and Ninth Street, which I think we, looking back, it's like we never should, we should have addressed a lot of things, like the co-op going from three entrances and exits on each side of Eighth and Ninth to One, because that's gonna be highly problematic in the future. I've already seen it at Christmas time when people start backing out. It blocks the entrance and it just backs up on the street. So, and we also had some issues with engineering on that with, when we had our rains and we had high tides on Eighth Street there at J, it went underwater along with the bar there. So I'd also like to point out on 51-13, this is land that you're going to purchase for, next to the Arcade of Marsh for a wildlife sanctuary for projects dealing with your sea level rise adaption strategy. I'm a little confused about this because from the standpoint, you have a study going on with the coastal commission, so why would you be purchasing land until you get that study? You would, seems like the description, it doesn't go into detail, would also not be a very good area to be investing in from the standpoint, because that's exactly the area that will be underwater in the future. So, and 67-04, construction of your wastewater treatment plant, you know, I've talked about this quite a bit, and we don't seem to have like any data of what's going on there. You know, how about the financial transparent reports as far as, that's $64 million. And, I mean, I would think at this time we would have some photographs or something where we're at with that progress. We'd also have designed the second phase of the wastewater treatment plant, which I guess you have a hold, but there's no description on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Gregory. Do we have anybody on Zoom making comment?
We do not have any online comment for this, for this meeting.
All right, well, thank you. I'll close public comment and move on to new business. And item A is to review preliminary projected revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '24 to '25. Can we get a staff report from Finance Director Todd?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. So this is really a starting point, and it is kind of pre-budget, but I wanted to talk a little bit about why we put together these projections and the role they're gonna play in developing the fiscal year '24, '25 budget, and then looking beyond that all the way out to fiscal year 2029. So it's really a baseline. It'll provide you tonight an early estimate on what we're looking at for next year. Just some things you should be aware of, it is based on current staffing levels all the way through fiscal year 2029. That's not really very realistic, but again, it's about getting that baseline, so you can see as we go forward, building that up. It does not assume any additional taxes or revenues. It provides, really, the, it'll, as we go forward, it will provide the impact of budget decisions over a five-year period, so you can kind of see how those build going out. And it will allow us to kind of run scenarios and walk through that as we develop the budget. Just looking at the revenue projections, these numbers are pretty solid right now. I went through them line by line. We look at historical collection rates, we look at what the consultants and information that we've gotten from other sources on sales tax, property tax, those sorts of things. I will look at recent trends, including what we collected last month, how that impacts the year-to-date. We'll look at known impacts, so these are the things that we know. A good example of this is our TOT last year. We knew that we were gonna lose at least one of the hotels to Cal Poly, so we took that into account in our projections. We, it'll also build in inflation. Inflation is really important in the outer years, because that's how we're building the projections as they go out and increasing those. Economic forecasts are taken into account. I will say that I feel like the estimates that are here for you tonight are fairly realistic, and I want, the reason I'm making a point of stating that is that sometimes governments have a tendency to budget their revenues conservatively. And while I certainly don't think they are beyond what we will meet, I feel pretty confident about them, I wouldn't call them conservative, so I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page there. Something big you will see when you start looking at them between the fiscal year 2024 and the out-years is, in order to sort of get a baseline operating budget for the purposes tonight, I have removed those one-time grant revenues that are typically offset by capital expenditures, so I've only included what we would consider sort of ongoing operating revenues that we can typically count on from year to year. The expenditures and expenses, and the difference between expenditures and expenses, I just wanted to stay here, because I'll use these terms, and we have a tendency to use them interchangeably, is expenditures are, in our government funds, which include our general fund and our special revenue funds, expenses are considered in our enterprise funds. Not quite sure why we have to have multiple titles, but we do. The numbers you're gonna see tonight do not reflect the department's mittels yet, so they're really based on the current year's budget plus sort of some just inflationary sort of increases or expectations going forward. Those, again, you know, in a few weeks or a month, or when we get a chance to look at these again, will be certainly far more accurate than they are tonight. We are basing it on the most recent mid-year budget updates. I have a placeholder in for personnel services, which is your salaries and benefits, of a 4.5% cost of living increase from '23, '24 to '24, '25. That's based on the annual All Cities West factor, which is 4.3. I rounded it up to be easy, that's the same number that we increased our fee schedule that you'll see tomorrow night, so I'm trying to stay consistent with that. And you've got a 15% increase in health insurance, and that is based on the early projections we're having at our cost there, so those are already just placeholders. Part of the reason I'm pointing that out is that we started negotiations today, this is not a promise, it has nothing to do with where anything will end up, but I needed something to plug in as far as moving forward.
This includes APD as well, correct?
I'm sorry?
Does it include the police department?
Yes, yeah, it's, I did that straight across the board. I didn't, I didn't segregate it by unit, it's all employees, which may or may not happen. And again, it does remove those big one-time grant expenditures that are tied to capital. And in fiscal year '23, '24, you'll remember, we did have those additional pension payments. I have not included any of those, that'll be a budget choice that you'll make as we go through the process. And again, it doesn't include any additional staff over the five-year period. Just another reminder is that we will have about $645,000 in American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding for fiscal year '24, '25, but that will run out, and that's intentional, because we wanna, we don't want, we wanna spend every dollar we got. But it does mean that some of the programs listed there that have been funded with ARPA are not included after fiscal year '24, '25. So again, those are potentially part of our second conversation, which is on the transactions and use tax, whether or not those are something that you would wanna fund with an additional revenue source. And again, I realize this is lots of numbers, but I really would draw your attention, I wanted to make sure all the numbers were there, so if anybody wanted to look at them, pull them out, and add them up, or even do analysis later, they were available. The blue line towards the bottom is really the one that's gonna give you an idea of sort of our annual operating. And a good sign is if it's positive, that means that we're bringing in more funds than we're spending. Again, these are early projections, but as you can see on a citywide basis, so these are all of the funds in the city, you know, we are actually going, we are projected to operate at, you know, a little over two and a half, about two and a half million dollars average a year to the good. That is, that is positive, that's great news. It means that when you look at the very last line, the estimated ending total fund balance or retained earnings that we're looking at, in, excuse me, in fiscal year 2024, we're just under 43 million, and by fiscal year, the end of fiscal year 2029, we're at over 55 million. So on the big picture, we look great. But keep in mind that we can't, in many cases, spend money from one fund to the other, and that's where we get into a little bit of a challenge, which brings me to the general fund. And again, same kind of picture, lots of numbers, but, but it gives you all the detail for anybody who's interested, which may only be me. But if you brought, if you look down at that blue line, unfortunately, it doesn't look as good when we're looking at the general fund. And the challenge, of course, with the general fund is that this is where most of your general services, including your administration, police, much of your parks dollars are spent out of here. This is where the bulk of sort of the city obligations run. It's the one also with the least amount of controls on it, so it's the one that you would typically spend on new projects and things that, you know, have a little bit more flexibility. So the competition for these dollars is always higher than any of the others. But again, it's, it doesn't include any additional revenue sources, and it, so you're not including any of the grants for capital, but you're also not including the expenditures. And you'll see that if you look at the differences between the projected 2024 and projected 2025, you'll see a big drop under intergovernmental revenues, about halfway down in the top half under revenues, and about halfway down, or capital projects, or capital outlay, excuse me, which is the second from the bottom on expenditures. You'll see that those are sort of reduced to the baseline, just to give you sort of a more of an operating picture. But this is, this is a challenge. It is also not uncommon, I can tell you that many cities, when I do, many places I've worked, when you do a five-year plan out, you have that structural deficit. It is a challenge for a lot of local governments, and it's something that when I was looking at just tax increases in the last election in March, there were, out of, I believe, 10 of the cities that had, that put something on the ballot, three of them had actually declared fiscal or financial emergencies in order to put the tax measure on, because they felt like this kind of being underwater was a significant enough issue that they needed to address it immediately. So your enterprise funds, your water and your wastewater, which are the next two, and I'm just gonna hit a couple of the bigger funds to give you an idea, typically are the ones that are doing pretty well. You will notice that your water fund here is, it's a little bit negative when you look at that blue line, but it's fairly minimal when you took, when you talk about the total revenues. This one is also one that it has a small, under services, charges for service, I do have a small increase built in every year, but that's the one where you would likely, you would likely, you know, ask the ratepayers for an increase to cover whatever you need to do. It does also, and this is probably the more important piece, is that because we removed the capital in fiscal year 2025, it's probably less realistic, because that really is a big portion of both the water and the wastewater utilities are replacing that very expensive infrastructure. So that's the piece that you'll see as we develop the budget that will probably change things, but you'll also have some revenue hopefully to offset that up under intergovernmental revenues. But you'll also have some revenue hopefully to, to offset that up under intergovernmental revenues, which is now zeroed out. Your wastewater fund, you will notice a couple of things here. One is that the, the blue line towards the bottom is about $3 million, two and a half to, three and a half to $3 million to the good. You'll also notice if you look under charges for service that I've, I've left them flat in 2025. That's the last of the rate increases that will go into place. You may relook at those once you do a really big picture on your capital. It'll, it'll become, you know, you, you may have to balance that differently. But I didn't want to plug it in until we had that information available and looked at that sort of on an ongoing basis. You'll also notice that this is really the reason, this fund is really the majority of the reason that that first one, which is the all-city funds looked good, is because you have a pretty, right now, you have a pretty solid wastewater enterprise fund. Keeping in mind again that much of that bottom line that you're building up is really about building for some pretty significant additional capital projects in, in the net, you know, the, the 10 to 20-year timeframe.
And initially, when we set these rates, it was because the state had told us that they would not be able to grant money for the wastewater treatment plant, but they would be loaning us money for the wastewater treatment plant. So the debt service would have taken away any of that excess on the blue line. Nate Tridna's team worked hard with the state and we just hit the timing right. As you know, that we're bringing in, you know, a substantial probably 90 to 95% of this first 60-plus-million-dollar phase-in grant. So that does allow us to save this money for Phase Two, which will be good working capital for the city to look at.
And then another, another challenging fund, and this is not going to surprise anybody. I think we've talked about the fact that the Stormwater Enterprise Fund has not brought in enough revenue to really cover the, the minimum expenses that are required to meet the basic needs of this fund. When I first put this together, I will tell you, I, I actually, because it looked so bad when you look at the blue line and when you look at the very bottom line and it ends up a million and a half dollars in the hole, I'd actually plugged in money because it, it bothered me so much. And I was like, no, I'm going to take out that. We need to look at it from the standpoint of what we need to do to fill the hole that's here. So again, just trying to be realistic on what we need to do. I do know that the Environmental Services Department is in the middle of a rate study, looking at how to, how to do that and what that would take. So, you know, that's something that I'm sure we will be addressing. But I didn't want to hide anything here as far as the fact that this is one of those things that we will, we will need to address from a financial standpoint.
So stormwater has always been an issue for us. We have a lot of infiltration in various areas. And so in Sunnybury, that was an area they worked really extensively to see what they could do. About when it rained, eliminating the 60,000 gallons that came roaring through the treatment plant. And so I still hear people mentioning that and saying, yeah, we just treat, you know, rainwater. But I'm hoping that we can figure out what, you don't agree with, I'm just telling what people say, that we treat rainwater. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can figure out what to do about the infiltration because we have to gear up for that going through our wastewater treatment plant, so.
Yeah, we, subsequent to some of those comments, although we do still get some of them today, we did one large project for INI and I think captured, you know, at least 25% maybe of, of the INI, you know, that we were seeing on a regular basis. This has paid in spades. And I don't ever want to, you know, jinx anything, but the number of sewer upsets that we've had in the city with the rain that we've had in the last three years has been so far reduced to even light rains that we experienced 10 years ago. As a result of that initial INI project, engineering, you'll probably talk about this in the CIP program, is gearing up for the second phase of a very significant INI project within the system. Our stormwater system that is designed to capture stormwater and, and move it, you know, safely out to the bay and not flood certain areas of the city. Stormwater has become just a highly regulated, in essence, and other utility for cities over the last 15 years. Arcata was, I would say, cutting edge and first to pass a stormwater fee to start to deal with some of the infrastructure because we have so many creeks and watersheds that are running through Arcata. But part of that is that this, that was passed long before Prop 218. There was no vote. There was no process other than the council's process around assessing stormwater fees. So this is a good time as the state makes a number of requirements on the city for that stormwater utility, for us to look at those rates and figure out how to kind of right-size those for the parcels that contribute stormwater to the system.
And so there was this time where they did, they checked to see how many gutters were hooked up into our wastewater system. And so if you saw when they were putting smoke into the lines, you would think there were a lot of houses on fire because the smoke was coming out of their gutters. So I, we've done a lot to make a difference. I just brought up a comment, you know, and I know we're, we worked really hard and I know we've done a lot in Sunnybury. So thank you. I just thought I'd bring it up.
No, I think it's good because I don't think even the general public really thinks of stormwater as a utility yet. I mean, I don't think that's so common. So I mean, even as we move forward on this rate study, will, I think, be a good idea to bring a general item to the council just to kind of start to educate the community on what a stormwater utility really looks like for a town like ours.
Could we go back to the previous slide, just on the waste, on the water in general, I think?
Is this the one? Did you want the water?
Yeah, no, no, that's right. Because, um, so maybe, maybe I'm not understanding. So I just, well, no, okay. Oh, never mind. I was, maybe you had bumped ahead in the slide, but, because I, the blue was all showing in the negative. And so I was curious and I thought it was just our general wastewater. And I thought, well, if we had already increased the rates to pay for things and then we got a grant, why are we, haven't, running out of deficit? But maybe you'd already jumped ahead to the, the other one.
I, I must have already bumped forward to the stormwater.
Okay, because I was looking at that when we were talking and I was like, wow, then why are we in, why are we going backwards?
This is, at this current moment, the wastewater enterprise fund is the golden child.
Okay, that's as it should be.
Things can change.
All right, thank you.
No, it's okay.
Well, so going on to infiltration, and when we had the flood recently, which we have pictures of, I put them in my box. So that's something that, you know, we have to think about as far as how we move that water or how it gets moved or on whose property is it backed up and how can that be opened up and whatever it might be. Will happen again.
And, and keep in mind, you know, even looking at the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, it's, you know, these are just trying to get the basics done. There's, you know, that capital outlay, you know, you're, what you're talking about is, is really where that will drive it up. So I'm, I'm, and it is something that we will need to address. And part of the reason that I wanted to point it out as something that just needed to, to pay attention to and look at from a funding standpoint going forward. And as far as just the preliminary outlook, that, that is what I had. I wanted to keep it simple. I'm happy to share the details or those reports with you if you want to look at them in detail. And they do come with footnotes that were too complicated to try to put on a slide. The, the slides themselves were overwhelming. So if you're interested in how much things were increased or, or changed, that is available.
Now, it wasn't that wastewater enterprise fund that we took money out for Calpers.
We, we, we did take, we did this year and we did the water fund.
Okay.
Yes. And the general fund, the bulk of it came from the general fund. But yes, those were the three that contributed to it. And I do want to, I, I know that this has been brought up a number of times. The, the reason that we took funds out of water and wastewater is that there are employees that work for those funds whose expenses are directly tied to those funds. And so it was that portion, it was the, the funds portion of those costs that we were trying to buy, that we're trying to buy down the pension obligation.
So when we're talking about pension obligation, is that factoring at all into what you, no?
Not, not today, but it is something that we, when you adopted your, your budget last year, we agreed that we would bring it up and talk about it annually at the budget. And so that's a decision that'll have to be made as we go forward.
Okay, and this is maybe a stupid question, but I just read something on Loca today about Gavin Newsom made some decisions about pension funding. Is that going to affect us?
I don't, I don't know. I'll have to look at what, what it was.
Let's get yours.
So I have two, two questions if there aren't any other. When I was thinking about the ARPA funds, I believe we used ARPA funds for police incentives in order to acquire some additional police officers. Is that, was that correct or did I, it come from somewhere else?
No, it came from your general fund. So we budgeted, we budgeted those, those incentive sign-on bonuses and retention bonuses generally out of the general fund. But we do, we have budgeted one sergeant and we did, and historically, we had budgeted half of another police officer as part of the retainage program along with about five other employees. That, and those, all of those positions have moved back to the general fund in 2024, 25 to be funded. So it's another reason that general fund has that negative number is that we've had to reabsorb those employees in the general fund. And like I said, about five and a half were charged to ARPA up until the end of this year.
So my other, my other question is that we have about $60,000 that's left over in ARPA funds that we.
For this year, you're going to have about 665,000.
You don't want to talk about that today?
You have 62,000 in your, in, in the, in the council community support payments and those are on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay, so I can't tell you what I think.
I just have one more quick question about personnel because I know we've got like three pretty significant high-paying positions that are turning over. So will that affect our budget, like to the positive if people are coming in at lower salary ranges?
It, it all depends. So yes, yes, in, because we've got two of those positions filled. And I will tell you, part of the reason that, that it's not so much that they're coming in lower, but it's actually the retirement, the Calpers program they're under. Those folks are coming in under Peppera and not the miscellaneous. And it's a much lower cost to the city and it's much more manageable over time. So that's probably where you'll see your savings and it will be a long-term savings more so than, you know, if we brought in somebody who, who was a miscellaneous classic. And we did, we did budget for some of those cash payouts that are potentially going to happen in, have happened as of this week and will happen going forward. And we've got a, I, I know we're looking at potentially some police officer retirements in the next year that may also impact us. And the same thing there, it's more, it's, it's likely if we replace, if we start, if we move everybody up and we're replacing the position with an entry-level officer, you definitely are going to have savings. And again, it's really going to be in the Calpers, Peppera savings.
All right, great, thank you. Does anybody have any more questions about the, this?
I do, I have one more question, but it might be for tomorrow. Now it's just flipped right out. Oh, my street's, my sidewalk cleaner.
That's tomorrow.
Is that tomorrow? Or is it today? I just, it's tomorrow, okay, under goals, what we're going to pay for. Okay, I just want to check. I don't want to forget it.
All right, Tabitha, before we leave, could we go back to the general fund slide?
Yep.
I'm thinking you can just push here.
Oh, you're going to.
Well, maybe not when it's open.
Usually there's, of course, part of this is because my eyes are bad.
I'm just going to do. Could you share of the programs such as Community Ambassador or Support Funds in Valley West, like what did you keep included in the projected years going out? I mean, I just think it'll be relevant as you have a discussion on the potential transaction and use tax. Because, you know, that tax is intended to kind of fill this gap that you're seeing in the general fund. Do we have any of those programs built into those projections?
We do not. So, so for 24, 25, it's not in the general fund. It's in the, it's still in the ARPA. So it, it is there in the, oops. So in the all-city funds in 24, 25, those, those are, those are funded, those basic programs. I have not funded them anywhere in fiscal year 26, so, and, and out. So that is something that, you know, is looking at if, if we have a revenue, then we can match those programs to that revenue.
So when we're deciding on budget for July 2025, that's when we have to figure out.
Yes.
Pay for that.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and obviously the, the revenue piece of it is something we have to think about now because you have a whole process to go through and is our next agenda item.
All right, do anybody, does anybody else have any questions before we move on to the next? All right, well, it looks like you're still up, Tabitha. So the next item is reviewing draft language for proposed transaction and use tax or sale, to your sales tax, November 5th, 2024 ballot measure. And can we get a staff report on that, please?
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to just really quickly kind of review some of the, the basic information that will go into the decision and the factors and the things that we have to kind of step through over from today, kind of going forward over the next couple of months. Just a reminder, our current rate is 8.5%. That's made up of Measure G, 0.75%, or three-quarters. The county Measure Z, half a cent, plus the state portion equals 8.5%. We do have the capacity to increase to 9.25%. And we are looking at that full three-quarters or 0.75% as the, what we're proposing in, in the sample language here. We're estimating $2.6 million. We'd be generating probably plus or minus $100,000. How it's paid, again, it's added to taxable sales within Arcata city limits. And then who's impacted? It's, it's, it's important to remember that it's not just citizens. It's really anybody who comes into contact with City of Arcata Commerce. So it's going to be your residents, visitors, businesses, students, anybody making purchases within the city or for purposes of the TUT, anybody who has anything delivered into the city. So we do get a portion of Amazon. If you buy a car out, either out of town or out of state, it ends up registered here. We get taxed on that. So we do benefit from the area where it's delivered as opposed to the state tax, which is where the transaction happens. Just a few requirements on how, how we can, we're voting and the tax itself. A reminder, we are asking for a general tax, which means that the revenues are unrestricted. We are outlining in the ballot language basically what the council intends to dedicate those funds to and use them for. But just a reminder, if it's not a special revenue tax, it, that the council, future councils do have discretion on how they use those funds. The council must approve the ballot and putting it on the ballot by two-thirds, which means four out of five council members would need to vote for it. If one of you is gone, all four would have to vote to put that on the county election in November. Voter approval is only 50%, a majority plus one. Just a reminder, we are limited when we can place general taxes on the ballot and it has to coincide with city council elections unless, again, we declared an emergency. And that would have to take all five city council members. So we are targeting November 5th, 2024. And the next time you would be able to go through that process again would be November of 2026. I thought it might be helpful just to kind of look at the city and how we relate to other, the other jurisdictions in the county. This is comparing the 1% Bradley Burn Sales Tax because every, every one of our jurisdictions gets 1% of what's collected in our city. So it's a good kind of way to see where the tax is collected and how that compares to population. So starting on the left side, you've got the jurisdictions. I've pulled the information that was reported to us by our sales tax consultant for fourth quarter of 2023. That was the amount that was collected. And you can see in the next column, moving towards the right, that as a percentage of total county tax, it's, it's pretty straightforward. The very small cities are a fairly small amount. City of Eureka, of course, has the largest chunk at over 50%. And then unincorporated county down below at almost 22%. I thought it would be interesting to kind of look at how that's broken out on a per capita basis or a population. And so that population is from May of 2023. The California Department of Finance puts those estimates out and it's actually what we use to set our GANT or expenditure limitation. That's what they provide us. And then the percentage of population. And again, one of the things that I found interesting is that some cities and we're, you know, you can see that our total tax is a little bit less than our total percent of population. It's completely opposite for City of Eureka. They're 19.5% of the county's population, but they get, you know, over 52% of the tax that's collected county-wide. County, on the other hand, is 52.9% of the population. And that's unincorporated, all of unincorporated county, but only collect about 22% of that tax that's generated. So it gives you kind of a feel and it's, you know, the obvious point is that the City of Eureka is certainly the regional hub for shopping and probably where many of our residents spend a good chunk of their money and pay sales tax. And then the final column is just the current sales tax rate as of today, based on what's provided by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. You can see Eureka does have the highest rate at 9.25%. of Tax and Fee Administration. You can see Eureka does have the highest rate at 9.25%. If, if the council chooses to put the TUT increase on the ballot and it's successful, we would be at that same rate. My understanding is there are one or two other jurisdictions that are looking at-
I think Fortuna is definitely-
Yeah, and it, that's increases too that would put us all at about the same level. But I, those aren't confirmed, and I don't, I don't have the details as far as their councils yet, having made those decisions. But it also gives you just an idea of where everybody stands and it's good kind of comparison data.
I believe Fortuna is definitely going to put it on the ballot, and we were told by a council member at HTA that it's going to happen.
Okay, good. I had heard the rumor. Just again, kind of, these are the major industries that are categorized by the city sales tax. So this is based on Measure G, so it's specific to Arcata. But it gives you an idea of where we're collecting our tax and kind of the areas that would probably be geared towards folks that are not necessarily residents in the city, things like business and industry, restaurants and hotels. And again, the hotel room is not taxed under the TUT, but if you eat in the restaurant, or you buy souvenirs, or you, you know, shop in their gift shop, those, those transactions are. Building instruction is a good solid basis for us. The food and drug is a similar one. Food, groceries and medication are not taxed, but there's a lot of stuff in the grocery store that you buy that is not food. Same thing about the drugstore, and those are taxed, and it's a good, a good support. And then fuel and service stations, you know, being on the 101 corridor, we have a lot of folks who are stopping, you know, to get McDonald's and fill up their tank with gas, and, and that certainly has an impact on us. And then autos and transportation is really auto parts and new, new and used cars that may be coming into our jurisdiction. And then transfers and unidentified are mostly transactions between businesses, but it's also the catch-all where they throw things they can't put in any of the other categories. Just a, kind of a reminder that TUT does not apply to many things. Groceries, rent, medicines, diapers, utilities. There are utility taxes, but those are different, and, and this will not impact those. Your dental, feminine hygiene products, personal services, real estate and education expenses are not subject to our TUT. This is really just a reminder, these are the exact same slides that FM3 Research presented. I just wanted to kind of remind everyone that we did, in the 567 responses to the community survey, we did get 72 that supported a measure, a TUT measure at 0.75% or three-quarters of a percent. These happen to be the, the top areas or priorities for voters, and it was what I used as sort of a, an outline for putting together the draft language. You know, conservation, certainly when it comes to our natural areas, is important. Public spending disclosure and accountability was also a very important factor to our voters. The MIST program, our roads are always, come up and always important, making sure that all the, the funds are spent locally. Homelessness, storm drains, and then natural disasters and emergencies all had 80 or more percent as far as the response. Other things that were important, but that fell somewhere between 65 and 80%, cleaning up light and trash in public areas, safety for people walking and biking, that, those outreach or social services for youth, making sure that we can help kind of defer them. City services, affordable bus service, trails, climate change and adaptation, after-school programs, and then just climate change and making sure that we are supporting removing carbon through our trees and plants. I wanted to also just highlight a couple of other items that will be on the ballot in November at the state level. So these are state initiatives. The California Business Roundtable, which is a group of large corporations and has sponsored over the years a number of initiatives that have made it to the ballot and a few that have been negotiated through with the legislature. But the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act has the potential to change how local governments are able to increase taxes and even their local fees. And so it's one that we should pay attention to. Essentially, what it does is that we would no longer be able to pass a TUT increase by 50-plus 1%. It would require two-thirds votes. But the, this particular initiative does not require two-thirds vote to pass, so it's something to consider. It also pays, places some additional limitations on local fees and charges and makes it a little harder to collect what's reasonable. You have to, you would actually have to charge the least expensive option. So it's just another sort of factor that we should take a look at. And it has been, there is a legal challenge by the state legislature and the governor. It is set to be heard before this Supreme Court, and I couldn't find anything today when I searched in either March or April. They expect a ruling on it by June. And the timing on that, what, what the state has asked for is to actually have it removed for constitutional violations and some other issues from the November ballot. Whether or not the, the Supreme Court will, will weigh in on that way, that place, we do, we do not know. But I'll keep you sort of up when I hear anything that happens on that, because it does have, like I said, some, some impacts on how we would move forward. The legislature also had a counter-ballot measure, ACA 13, which essentially requires the same supermajority voting requirement limitation. So if, if you're passing something that requires two-thirds vote to, or requires two-thirds vote to implement future revenues, this would require that that measure would, would be, have to be passed by the same supermajority. So two-thirds of the people would have to support a two-thirds requirement in any initiatives going forward. So again, we'll see, we'll see how that plays out too. It could be very interesting if we have conflicting language that comes out of the election, or two things pass or don't pass, but we'll, we'll, we'll see that. But I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of those changes or potential changes.
And I'll just add, the council is on record both in support of ACA 13, that came before the council as an item, and then opposing the California Business Roundtable's measure. Tabitha's being gentle. If that roundtable tax measure passes, that will gut local government over the next 20 years. There's absolutely no doubt. That will, the league is gearing up for what will be the fight of our life on that.
And this is the same language that was in your staff report, and it's really, the focus for tonight is having, having the council review it, provide input, potential changes. If you want to add, subtract, if you decide it's, you know, whatever, it, it's really here so that you can provide feedback so that at a future council meeting, we can bring it back to you for adoption and, and placement on the November ballot. And I can pull it up too in a Word document once we've gone through it so that we can edit it as we go, if you're interested.
Where you have the choice.
Oh, we can try.
We're not taking public comment.
Does anybody?
Yeah, um, I like to get all technical about language. No, um, but I like this, and I did just want to ask one clarifying question before I, I give my one little change. But, I mean, because this is a pretty big catch-all list, but I mean, is that just in the intent to like capture what the general fund basically does for the city? Because it, it just seems hard that like these are all of the things that it's going to address. But it, but in a sense it is, right? I mean-
I, I think in the big sense, yes. I don't think there's anything there that we would not be doing with these funds. And, and you're right. I mean, we could be, you can be more specific, you can be even more general. Again, it's, it's really trying to kind of highlight what we can do and where we can spend additional money if this tax is passed. And I think it is important for, whatever happens is that, you know, if, if this is what we say we're going to do, that we keep, that we are accountable for it, and that we do have the ability to, you know, go back and show the voters and the public what we can do. So it is something that if, there's something on that list that you feel like maybe isn't something that is a priority or not something that, that you would fully support, that we, we have that conversation about potentially pulling it off or, or putting something else on.
No, I think it's a great list, and I think it is a lot of the, the stuff that we talked about, and especially, you know, looking at the data from what FM3 did. This is kind of, yeah, that, that list in order of what folks were interested in. My one thing, that, that word of emergency, disaster and climate change prevention, and I, I feel like that, like we can't really prevent emergencies or disaster or climate change. There are things that happen and that are happening, and I would suggest that we change prevention to like preparedness. And that was my one little change.
That's a great catch, Sarah. I like that.
I'm going to go ahead and end this and pull up the editable version so that I can make that change as we go.
So I have a question about, oh, it slipped away, but nevertheless, oh, how are we going to address clinical medical, medical health when we don't actually have enough places for people to go? That'll be a question that will be asked, and I don't know how I would ever answer it.
Well, I think to the extent of, of this, the city's programs, it really is the mental health clinicians that are working through the police department that are actually employees of the county. So that is our MIST program. That is continuing to participate in the local mental health consortium that the police department also attends, that really does get down to sort of the individual level of who's in crisis in your communities. And then it just continues to build on those programs with the county to better fund those. I mean, we certainly will hopefully have the triage center in construction within the next couple of years.
The behavioral health?
Mm-hmm.
Well, once we have that, that'll be a, a good system that we can use.
Yeah, and so then again, our support system is making sure that whether it's, you know, not necessarily sworn police officers, but some sort of alternative response, it is, is getting out into the field and then being able to direct those to all the resources that we do have, and just being, staying up to date on the most current programs that are available in the county and getting people to those services. Community ambassador falls, you know, under, quite frankly, to some mental health response to people in crisis. They do it every single day on the plaza.
So that's number two, services to homelessness.
Yeah, that's what I was going to chime in with, is they, they work really hard to get, oh, people connected to services, the ambassadors do.
So I was just wondering about one other item, because we have sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, and we know we want to have more bus service, and can that, can do anything around that in there?
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, Alex, and we could even add it to that bullet point and just include transit on there. Because I think that's a, you know, I, I feel like this, this language does a good job of capturing like a lot of programs that we have that do like support an often like underfunded sector of our community and like people that take transit fit into that, that category as well. So I think it's, yeah, it fits.
And our city engineer did very much want us to add transit, and, and he would also like us to add roads too. And that isn't something bad, because we can always spend more money on our streets. I mean, that is just, you know, a truth too. But something else that's important to point out is there is a lot of overlap here, because even transit is climate change, you know, preparation, and it helps us. There, there's a lot of things that we can do that will, will hit many buckets.
And I think roads was actually one of the top priorities from that survey too, so adding that's probably-
That's how we passed Measure G years ago, was because it was roads, and then another council member wanted to add police in there. But because they did a polling, it, it turned out that roads were in such bad shape in Arcata, they felt like we were a third-world country, and they would support Measure G. Then we added police to it. But that's how we got Measure G, I think, through is because of the roads.
So my question is, I guess, so all of this money comes rolling in, and we have all of these bullet points. How do we like decide how much goes into what, how do we divvy it up? I mean, all of these things are extremely important. There's definitely, you know, some programs that are very important that we keep, community ambassadors, you know, the extreme weather shelter, but how? I mean, do we end up like ranking them when it all comes in at the next budget?
So, so a couple of things. One is that it will, because you won't start collecting this until April of 2025, you really won't have any of the revenue in the next budget year. There'll be a couple of months, but, but it'll be after the, you know, it'll be collected months afterwards. So it'll be the '25, '26 budget that you're going to make those decisions. And it'll be just like we do with Measure G. It'll be just like, you know, one of the items on the agenda for tonight is to look at your open space parks and trails funding and how you're going to spend that, and it's itemized. It will be those same kind of decisions. And I think, well, like Measure G where, where it was the, you know, there was the idea it would be two-thirds and one-third as far as how the funding would be split. Transportation, two-thirds, or streets, two-thirds, and one-third for the, the police. You are going to want some flexibility and, or future councils will want some flexibility as these priorities change, so that they can move programs around. If something's more successful than something else, you'll, you'll certainly want that ability to change. But I think it'll be an annual process that you will go through, just like you do the rest of the budget.
I just wanted to ask a question about citizen oversight, because that's mentioned here, and I know that's, you know, been an important piece to a lot of communication we've received. But I mean, then does this get folded into our already existing transactions and use tax oversight committee, or does that, you know, do we create a new committee? Or how, how does it relate to that work that's already being done, and what would that look like?
I think you could probably incorporate it into your existing committee. They are, they technically are one of the committees that only meets a couple of times a year. And so it would make sense to sort of incorporate this set of accounting and oversight into that process. There may be people, there, there may be folks serving on that committee today who look at it and say, I'm only interested in, in roads and public safety. You know, you're going to have to get somebody else to do the other. But I think we should try to incorporate it into the process you already have, and it would just be an additional, you know, here's, here's the funding, here's, you know, recommendations and needs. And they would make recommendations to you like they do on the, the funding for the streets and the public safety currently.
Thank you, Tabitha.
And something else I want to mention about that, that's really kind of, because it gets highlighted here, is that all the city's funding goes through an annual audit, that we, we do get looked at and on a, on an annual basis. And they dig into, you know, certain areas every year. So this will be a part of it, but that is part of the city's accountability overall.
Great, thank you so much. Very thorough presentation, as usual. So I think that we did some good wordsmithing.
Do we want to add roads there, or do we want to, I mean, do we want to like take just like sidewalks and bike lanes and turn that into streets? I don't know, or is that too general for people? I see Natra raises eyebrows a little. Or maybe, you know, or yeah, just add streets or roads to that bullet point?
No, when you smell it so bad, it, it doesn't prepare.
If you have good transit, you don't want your buses to fall apart because your roads are all potholed. And we have the massive restructuring of G Street right now on the plaza.
Okay, thank you. That's a good suggestion. So I think at this point, we probably need a motion, or?
Well, just one thing. I mean, we've, I'm, I have, I have mixed feelings about the roads. Yes, we put it in, we need them, but roads can also use a lot of the money. So we need some commitments from you about that. But if we, we know that people listed roads as important, and transportation can mean different things to different people. And if we're trying to hit on some of those, those key words, we just might want to consider roads, because we might lose some people in that, so.
Well, maybe it'll all fit, you know, roads is only, if you use transportation, you go back and you add out the letters, roads and transit probably equals the same, almost, yes, almost, mm-hmm.
I like roads, comma, transit, and trails.
Yeah, I do too.
And then we got sidewalks and bike lanes. We got something for everybody. It's, it's, yeah, we got it all.
Roads and trails. And everybody's okay with the order they're in? I do.
Do we have to make a motion to move this forward? It's in my thing.
No, I, I think we've got, we've got direction, and you, you're not, you're not adopting anything tonight.
Nope, all right.
We'll bring it back.
All right, great. And then I think we're ready to move on. Yes, thank you so much.
Well, the only thing that'd be great when they put it in the ballot is that yes is small, no is really long. And I know it'll be fixed, so it won't be quite like that.
All right. Is everybody doing all right if we move again? Okay, so let's move on to C, overview of city's capital improvement program for fiscal year 2024, '25. And can we have a staff report from the engineering department, please?
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to first maybe start by just reminding you that you saw basically last year's five-year CIP in our budget booklet for the 2324, but the full five-year program. So the symbol was on the cover, so I just added it, kind of just as a reminder. And we're going to do another one this year, another five-year update that you will see. It's going to be connected or tied to the budget as well. But we wanted to take a little bit of time to do what I'm calling a brief project update to kind of go over some of the completed projects, some of those that are still in progress, and then a few new ones. So last year, I think our CIP was around $43 million total. We don't know what it is yet this year, because we're still obviously working on budget and a few of those numbers, but just to give you a ballpark on size. And so maybe another thing I wanted to mention is that we've got, as you can see, the, the group of us here. So we'll, we'll probably, you know, there's a list of projects. You have a list already in your agenda packet, and we're going to go over essentially those, that same list. It is slightly different than what you have there. We made a couple updates since then, and there will be more updates as, again, as part of the five-year CIP. But we'll, we're going to go through those projects, try to keep it pretty limited on time, and just, there's, there's a lot of projects to discuss. So most of them would just be a couple sentences about the projects, unless you have any specific questions. But we'll, we'll be tag teaming it, and, and I'll be talking about some of the projects, Natra and on others, and Emily on others. So as, as we go through, if you have any questions, just feel free to interrupt and stop us, or, you know, we can go back to questions and the projects at the end, if you prefer as well. So either way is fine with me. So the first thing I want to talk about is some of our completed projects. We've got three on the screen here. Terrace Avenue, it, it's kind of off California. It's, I'm sure you guys are familiar with this street that's been closed off for, what, seven years or something like that? And we had a couple of different options on how to repair it, but ultimately, we went with this, what's called injection grouting. It's, it's basically a gulch, I guess, that was filled in with a bunch of redwood stumps and debris over the years, probably an old logging road. And as, as they decompose and as things settle over the years, the road was just continuing to fail, and, and potholes were forming. So it was just a continual problem. So this injection grouting, they, they basically drilled down, in some cases, I think 40 feet they went down, and just inject grout or cement into it, trying to fill all those voids and caverns, and essentially build an underground bridge to support that, to keep it from settling over the years. And then when all was said and done, they paved it. So this is just a picture of, of the injection grouting process as it was happening. The next one is the Isaacson STI project improvements, Sustainable Transportation Infrastructure, is what STI stands for. This is the first phase. You probably recognize this project a couple of months back, when we were doing a lot of the sidewalk improvements along the plaza. This is, is essentially just a citywide project that included a lot of pedestrian and, mostly pedestrian-type improvements, meaning sidewalks and curb ramps. There were some intersection improvements that happened. As part of this project, we also added the enhanced pedestrian crossing at I Street, I Street in Samoa. So you probably saw that go in as well. So it's just a pretty good project with lots of various improvements throughout the city. And so we call this Phase 1, because bits came in pretty good, and we have some additional funding. So we're currently, as we'll talk about in the future, we're currently looking at a Phase 2 to try to use up the rest of those, those grant funds that we got for this project. The third one on the screen is the I Street Boat Launch. You guys may have seen that as well, but it's, it's a new, I want, I want to say it was 75-foot-long gangway going out to basically a floating kayak launch. So it did some parking lot improvements as well. So that's just a photo of the, the completed product. We also have the Arcata Ridge Trail. That is up off of Fickle Hill Road. I think this might have actually been prior year completed, or right around that, the turnover. So, but I can't remember which sections of the trail that, that it connects, but it, it's, it is right along Fickle Hill Road, just to the left of the photo there. We just have kind of a gravel pathway, and we have some delineators there to kind of separate the pedestrian travel. And then there's a, some new crosswalk striping and some visibility improvements. Some trees were taken down just to make sure that we had plenty of visibility for pedestrians who are crossing, bicyclists who are crossing along that street. The next one is the annual pavement maintenance program. This is an annual project that we do every year, just various locations throughout the city. In this project, or this, this year, this last one in 2023, we did some improvements along H Street. And in this, in this particular photo here is also on West End Road. And so West End Road, we, we ground it down, kind of smoothed it a little bit before we did some paving and some paving fabric. And we, we ended up putting some buffered bike lanes along the edge as well, kind of narrowed, narrowed up the lanes a little bit enough to do the buffered bike lanes and eliminated some, some of the parking in, in order to make room for the bike lanes. But this is a photo of the striping that was almost completed. And then the, the far right of the screen is the 10th and L Sewer Improvement Project. So this is, this was done as part of our, what we typically do, an annual sewer improvement program or project, excuse me, to where we have around about $150,000 each year. And typically, we'll do a small project. Sometimes it's lining of manholes or lift stations to try to reduce I and I. And in this case, we had a known issue that our utilities crew were constantly going out, having to fix and repair, because there was a, basically, there was an issue with flows in this line. So we ended up just repairing this short section of sewer line. It kind of went back the opposite direction. It was kind of an interesting project, but it worked out great, and everything seems to be working better. And so you'll see more of, of these type of projects. Again, we'll talk about them here in a little bit, but it's, it's the annual sewer improvement project. And, and we've talked about, in some cases, $150,000 doesn't go a long ways. So, you know, we might wait and do it every two years and do a larger, maybe $300,000 project or something. So, like I said, we'll talk more about it moving forward. And then we've got three other projects. Actually, Emily, I'm gonna let Emily speak to these.
Sure. So as the community has been able to see, the pump track at Redwood Park was completed recently, and it's been fun to see kids using it, all ages, on different types of bikes. The equipment at the playground is gonna be a big hit, and we've been really waiting anxiously for that component to be completed. The equipment installation is about complete. A couple more tweaks, and then the surfacing should be starting later this month. And our, our big end date is to have the playground open for when camps start at the end of June. So that will be really exciting. We'll definitely have a celebration when that is complete. We also completed the improvements at Bloomfield Park, and felt like we had a really great engagement with the neighborhood about the types of use and, and interest they, they had for improvements at the park, and struck a balance with that project. And our, our Parks Crew implemented the playground equipment installation, and that was a great opportunity for our crew, and that has come together well. We also have had a Cal OES Hazard Mitigation Grant that enabled the city to purchase generators for a number of our essential facilities.
All right. Moving mics around. So next, we have a list of what I'm calling just projects that are in progress. And so there are various stages of progress. Some of them are in the design, but, as opposed to construction. But I'm just going to go through some of the names and just a very brief description. And like I said, if you have any questions, want to hear more about them, just stop me. So the, the first one on the list is APD, APD radio upgrades. And so we're replacing some radios for APD. And so this one is, it almost could have been moved to completed, but I think we're still potentially a couple of weeks away. So technically, it's still ongoing at the moment. We have an EPA Brownfields Grant project. I don't know, Natra, you were gonna talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, this is the EPA-funded grant that's for the Little Lake, and just on South I Street. This year, we plan to clean up that side, hopefully, and once that's cleaned up, it'll be coming to you for determining what we'll be doing with that site. Oh, yes. Next one is South Arcata Multimodal Safety Improvement Project. This is the project we got grant through Caltrans, and this includes bicycle pedestrian safety improvements plus beautification along Samoa, South G Street. For the stretch of Samoa, it starts from V Street to all the way to the Union Street, and then for South G Street, from Samoa to all the way to South G Street. The goal is to have in next year or two, planning phase, I would say, we will be doing a lot of public engagement, public partnership in next 12 to 18 months, and then we'll be moving to the next phase. So next year, you will just be seeing just the planning phase of the project, getting some public feedback and what we want to see there. Next one is our Safe at School project. This is also grant-funded. We partnered with EdgeCog last year, and we were able to secure some grant funding for, again, the planning work. So this year, you will be seeing a lot of planning work we'll be doing. So in future, we can apply for more funding for construction. So this is initial planning level work, some pop-up demonstration for the Fonte Nova Charter School along Jane's Road. So this year, we'll be doing some planning work for that, what improvements would be doing in those area.
All right, I've got the next couple. Next one is Old Arcata Road. I'm sure most of you are very familiar with that project, as is the rest of the city. So that's going, it's going well. It was off to kind of a slow start, primarily due to the weather, but they're, they're in full steam right now, trying to make some progress and get some of, some work done. So that, that upper right photo there is a photo I took, actually, I think, two days ago or so. It's some of the newer sidewalk that's going in. So it looks, it looks a little odd, I would say, right now. It looks a little higher than you might expect, because there's still some improvements in widening along the side that's going to happen. And the, the road itself is going to be a little higher with some of the overlays and the additional paving plans. So it'll look better once all's said and done. But it seems to be going pretty well, and it seems like the traffic out there is also not, maybe not flowing quickly, but flowing.
It runs well. I mean, I, you know, I guess I could go another way to get out there, but to the gym, but I've been using that to go back and forth twice a week, and the traffic moves right along. It's not backed up for very long, and I would say it's worked out really well. The sidewalks going in, I noticed yesterday, they look really good.
Great. All right. The next one is our annual striping. Again, this is another annual project that we, we set money aside for. In some cases, we might just pick a road and do some additional, you know, bike lanes, not necessarily add some, but I guess in some cases, we add them, but also just to refresh some of the striping on some streets. We also occasionally just blend this in with some of our paving and use this to just stripe the street after we've done some paving as well. So sometimes standalone projects, sometimes it's combined with, with a larger project. And now we're to the annual maintenance, annual pavement maintenance, which is, again, is that, that larger annual project. That's the one I spoke to earlier, that this past year, we did H Street and West End Road. Yeah. So there, for this next upcoming year, that's going to be pretty minimal. Some of those funds kind of went towards Old Arcata Road, but we're still planning to try to do some, some improvements. And that, that varies in the type of improvement. Sometimes it's a grind and inlay, sometimes it's an overlay. Sometimes, you can see here, kind of micro-surfacing or slurry seal. So that's kind of a, just a various type of pavement management-type project. Natra, you want to hit?
Yes, definitely. This is Sunset LK Wood Safety Improvement. Now, the name has changed to US 101 and Sunset Avenue Interchange Project. We just finished last week planning and environmental phase of the project. We will be moving to design phase, and we have secured the funding for the design. So this year, we'll be doing design, and we did submit application for funding for construction for $15 million. So we're hoping to get that, and once we get that, we'll be in construction in 2026. That's the goal.
Yeah. All right. The next one is 8th and 9th Street Improvements. That's another one that's very close to being completed, could almost have been on that list. It, it does appear to be complete. It's, the roads are striped and operational. Kind of the remaining work left on that is, we were going to do some enhanced pedestrian flashing crossings at 8th Street. And so we're still kind of waiting. Those, those items were a little bit a longer lead item to get, so we decided to open up the, the traffic once we got the striping done, just because all the hardscape was done, and then install those when they come in. So those should be coming very soon here. Another thing, probably two, that initially that we discussed for completing this, or that was part of the original project, was to do a slurry seal over both of those roads prior to doing the final striping. Unfortunately, the weather just wasn't cooperating, and it was just pushing the window out to get this work done and the striping into potentially May or June. So we opted to do temporary striping, which is paint, is what you see out there now. And then, moving forward, when we do a larger slurry project, which we often do with the county or the municipalities, we'll, we'll likely go back in and do 8th and 9th Street again, and just slurry all of the, the new pavement within those limits, and then do a new, new permanent striping with thermoplastic.
Can, um, could you remind us, I can't remember, for the, the flashing pedestrian lights on 8th and 9th, is, is that going to be on K? Where are those happening? K?
I'm sorry, yes, K.
Okay.
It's gonna be very similar to those that are at 10th and K.
Okay, perfect.
It'll, it'll be essentially the same, same, just mimic what was done there at, at K Street.
And it's just 8th and K?
Just 8th and K, yes.
Well, it's all part of the long-range plan that was talked about years ago, about connecting downtown and the Creamery District.
All right. So the next project is lighting improvements. This one's currently on hold right now, primarily due to funding, but it's, it's miscellaneous street lighting at various locations throughout the city. So we have, we have a couple of streets that are on the list, and that we've made some effort on design plans, but at this point, just kind of waiting for funding for that. The next one is our annual sidewalk and accessible ramps. Again, as, as it states here, this is our annual one. Every year, we typically do around $100,000 to $150,000 worth of sidewalk and ramp improvements throughout the city. And so this is one, I don't, we haven't started it this year, so I don't know exactly where those locations are at, but it's just various locations throughout. We typically try to focus on areas, not always, but more in the inner city that gets used a lot, where there's lots of, of traffic to benefit from it. The next one is Isaacson. This is the one I mentioned earlier. This is the, oh, did I, oh, I'm sorry.
Great. As the council discussed in your preliminary goal-setting, completing Annie and Mary Trail remains a priority in the CIP for connecting downtown and Sunset Avenue, Kalpali to North Arcata and Valley West. So we are currently in the design phase.
Yeah, that upper photo is just a kind of a drawing for what it might look like across Gen Toli there. You can't see very well, but it's, it's showing that we're making progress. Okay, back to the Isaacson Sustainable Transportation Infrastructure Phase 2. So as I mentioned, we had a little bit of money left over from the initial phase, so we're hoping to do some more improvements, similar type improvements, sidewalk and pedestrian improvements. And then the next one is?
Yeah. So the next one, land acquisition for Sea Level Rise adaptation. That is specifically for two parcels that the council, over the last two years, had given direction to staff to enter into negotiations for the city to purchase for future adaptation. This is not for relocating the wastewater treatment. This is not for relocating the wastewater treatment plant, but instead of implementing adaptation measures that could be beneficial with the city's overall Seal of Arise adaptation strategy and local coastal programming.
So can, is it okay if I say something? So that they, they had a meeting not long ago where they were talking about how they wanted to fortify 101, and Emily, you were there for a while. And, and one of the, I notice every time I drive to Eureka, I look at how we have the salt marshes, I guess, along the freeway, and you could, and that was one of the things they were talking about, is how we could acquire more, create more, et cetera. And so I just wanted to bring that up because it sort of falls into this, looking at property for this area and also looking at what's going to happen with 101 between Arcata and Eureka.
Yeah, and I would just add, the city, city staff are participating in the technical working group for the Eureka-Arcata 101 corridor Seal of Arise planning, and committee director, community development director David Loy and myself are participating in that. And I think that ties in with the, the larger adaptation planning around the bay, for sure.
All right. The next one is waterline improvements. This is kind of a large citywide steel waterline replacement project. It, it's just replacing various steel, asbestos, cast iron, a number of different types of water lines throughout the city. Many of these are, are currently, I guess, deteriorating, and they're requiring constant maintenance by our, our staff. And, and some aren't, but have potential for that in the future, just based on the age and the type of materials. So it's a pretty good project. We are, I would say, we're about the 99%, 95% design complete package at this point. Hoping to go out to bid at some point. We're still waiting on the grant, I was, not the grant, I guess the grant agency, to review everything and give us the, the final approval to move forward. So it won't likely happen this year, but we are, we are making progress on the design. We're estimating it to be upwards of $9 million as of this point, yeah.
And so that's because your cast iron pipes are starting to go. So you haven't been finding any wooden pipes, have you, recently? I almost brought one down from the Phillips House Museum, just to show everyone what the pipes used to look like in Arcata, and they were all wood. Maybe everyone wants me to stop talking, I don't know. But I just thought it was interesting, and I keep wondering if you're going to run into those anywhere else, because they were actually like barrels.
I've not heard of that, and I've not seen it necessarily been called out on the, on the plans, but.
Well, there is one out at the Marsh Interprettive Center, and there's one up the Phillips House, that they were able to, they, you know, when they were replacing pipes, they actually found the old wooden ones.
We have some hanging at the corp yard, the old wood pipes, yes.
The next one is the Plunkett Waterline Improvements. It's another waterline improvement project on Plunkett Road. It's part of our, the Jacoby Creek Water District, which we essentially operate and maintain. This, this project also includes some booster pump improvements as well. We are currently in the design stages of that project. The next one is water storage zone. It's been referred to in other projects as Tank 1C. It's a new million-gallon steel water storage tank, kind of behind Alves on, on West End Road. And so that's a fairly recent picture. That's pretty similar to what it looks like up there today. It's a 100-foot diameter tank, approximately, you know, I think it's 17 to 18 feet water level, and then additional, like, seven or eight feet on top of that. So it's about 25 feet tall, I think 24, maybe, right there. And that's currently, it, it has been, it has been painted and coated on the inside, and the plumbing and majority of the electrical conduit has made it up to the site. All that's really left is a connection of the piping to it and some additional coating on the outside. So we're pretty close, and then a little bit of grading around, around the site as well. So we're, we're nearing completion of, of that project here, hopefully, in the next couple of months. Next one is water meters and registers. It's just an annual project where we purchase and install various new water meters throughout the city. I think it's pretty basic. I don't know if you have anything to add.
I mean, I'll just put a placeholder in the council's mind that I think, you know, we'll probably start to gear up for somewhere between a four- and five-year replacement of all of our water meters. Meters don't accelerate as they age, they slow, and so we're starting to see a pretty rapid decline in a lot of the meters overall. And, and moving to remote read and giving people access to sort of, you know, real live data on their water usage is something that we have more and more customers asking for. So capital-wise, I think our meter system is probably at a point where we're going to see a lot of benefit financially in doing that project and then bringing that new technology to Arcata.
So does that, that means that you can just drive down the street and read the meters? Or the meters all come in here red, or something? The new technology they've been using in Fort Bragg for a long time?
Yeah, we're hoping that we're going to be at Technology Stage Two, or we don't even need to drive, that it just remote comes back in.
I'll just go briefly through some of these. The city has a secondary groundwater, water source out on Hinden, near Hinden and Giandoli. And so we're, we're needing to do some pump maintenance, new pumps at that location. That's an ongoing project. With all of our projects, it's a, hasn't been as high of a priority. The next is upgrades to our SCADA system, and this is how all of our water systems talk to each other. And our, our staff person, Kevin Smith, runs this component in our IT department, and we have annual work. One of the key plans that we plan to upgrade this coming fiscal year is our Alliance Station, where the bulk of the city's water comes into from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. We also have another project that is a lower priority, but is replacing pumps at the First Street, south of Samoa Boulevard Pump Station, and that really kicks on when we have higher, larger rain events in particular.
All right. The next one is the Manhole Rehab and Sewer Collection System. This is the one I mentioned earlier, that typically we, we set aside around $150,000 per year, and a lot of it, at least what we've done in the past, aside from the 10th Street work, is lift station and manhole coatings to help kind of reduce INI into our system. So this project, again, is an annual project, but I think likely for this coming year, we probably won't have a project, and instead, hope to set that money aside and combine it with the funds for next year and do a larger project then.
So this one, next one is the one that we talked earlier. Actually, I call this Phase Five of our INI Reduction Project. As Alex, you mentioned earlier, we did not, I was not here, but Smoke Studies was done at Sunny Bray, and that was a Phase Three project that was started by Frank Klopp and Dobby Klass, and they did some work. And the biggest project, the largest project we did was in 2017, where we spent $7 million and replaced 10% of our line, but we reduced 25% of our INI in that area by doing that project. So we are planning to do projects like that in larger scale. So this is the project we put last year, and currently, we are in the planning and environmental stage of the project, and in the coming year, we'll be moving to the design phase. And we are hoping to start the construction in 2026. If we get money early, we will be doing the project in 2025, but now we are shooting for 2026. And the current estimate of the project is $14 million, and this encompasses throughout downtown, north of the city, and also some part of the Sunny Bray, which was missed last time. So this is our next big project, I would say. Right next with that is, I will combine that UV procurement and wastewater treatment project is the same one. UV was part of our wastewater treatment plant project. In next month or so, you will see a detailed report from us on the project. We are hoping to give you a detailed update on wastewater project. But currently, right now, we are 50% complete with the current project, on the rehab project. Financially, we have spent like $25 million to date, and we have spent maybe more than 18 months on the project. We have 18 months more to go. So I would say financially, we're doing okay on the project. Project is moving. As this is a rehab project, we are finding a lot of unknown that we are not aware of on, on the ground. So it's kind of exciting and not wrecking some time, but it's moving along pretty well, I would say. So yeah, that's all I got on the wastewater side.
I would also add, for construction for the wastewater treatment plant this summer, as was last summer, there will be about a 30-day closure to parts of trails in the Marsh and a part of the Bay Trail. And that will start the day after Godwood Days. So Godwood Days is coming up on, you know, Thursday, Friday through the weekend, and we will, we will have signage posted, detour signage posted. There will be a detour for pedestrians through the Marsh and for cyclists on South G Street when that portion of the Humboldt Bay Trail over Butcher Slough is closed. So just wanted to, to share that, and we've tried to get the word out more in the community as well. So just moving on, Phase Two for what comes next, after the Phase One construction is currently on hold. We anticipate that the feasibility study for the Coastal Hazards Adaptation and Implementation Plan for what comes next after Phase One, we anticipate that starting in April, that is funded by the Water Board. And the, the last one on the list is related, our park, our natural resources crew and police evidence, you know, storage areas are at the corp yard, and a future Phase Two may need even more square footage at the Corporation Yard. So it is still a priority to design a new, a new building at near and adjacent to the Park Shop.
Is that right down here, at Health Sport?
Yes, so to the east of Health Sport, in the community center parking lot. Well, if you've been out to Valley West and Giandoli, you can probably see the progress that's being made on the Carlson Park Improvement Project. Our contractor, Hooven and Company, is making great progress even through the winter. And we anticipate that the playground equipment and surfacing will be, start to be installed late this month. And we are anticipating most of the components being complete by early fall, and that includes pickleball courts and parking lot, and some future EV park, EV charging stations there as well. For Redwood Park, we anticipate a Phase Two in the next two years, and that may include resurfacing of the basketball court, or some other parking lot or outdoor performance space improvements. Another one that's on hold is, you know, the potential for irrigation well for the sports complex to decrease the city's cost. Four years ago, five years ago, we started, the city started billing ourselves for, for water, and that has definitely increased our utility budget in parks and buildings. But that is on hold for now, just a, nice to keep this on the radar. Another one that's also on hold, I'll skip down, is improvements to the HVAC system in City Hall. And then jumping back up, the ballpark improvement project. We anticipate going to construction after the crab season this summer. So having that be from August, you know, construction at the end of August into May, that is our goal. It's definitely a, a complex design project, and we're looking at finalizing the designs in May. Yes.
So when will we be able to see that design, or who's going to actually make those decisions on what it's going to look like?
So we have had a thorough community engagement process that started about two, three, two years ago, and most recently, we had a community survey that went out, and then discussion at the Parks and Rec Committee for the, the type of facade in particular. And the, the option that got the most traction was for a composite wood facade that has a bit of a way, a little bit of a curve or wavy top, but keeping kind of the similar scale of the current facade, but having that be built of kind of vertical, vertical wood composite members that then provide some interest when you're walking past, as well as opening up the entry plaza so that it's really open, looking from downtown, and is, doesn't have places to, that blocks, you know, visibility, and really invites the community in for games.
Yeah, I'm so bummed that big metal crab sculpture is not available anymore, because that would have been perfect, right in front.
Which sculpture is that? Talk about the baseball bat? Are you talking about the baseball bat?
No, no, no. There was this artist had made this big crab sculpture. It was hanging out in Eureka for a minute, and he tried to, I was looking at it like way before this even happened, and then, never lined up. But anyway, crabs. March, May 31st.
Just to finish this out, we then, the city has received a loan through the ECHA program for LED upgrades at the Arcata Community Center, as well as solar installations, and we're, we're planning to get that. That's a collaboration with RCEA, has helped the city lead that, and W Director Emily Benvey has really been leading that effort, and we'll see that more in the next year. And then the Arcata Library, we're also finishing up design for accessibility barrier removal of key barriers at the library. That's been a collaboration with the county and the city, and a grant from the state. We anticipate hopefully going to construction in the early fall, when there is the least foot traffic heading into the Arcata Library. The goal is to remain open during the construction.
So, you know, I've always thought about the library and how we have all the glass that faces into the parking lot, and that we have a slab out there. And I often think about if there was a door there, then they could actually have their, children's reading could be out there, or the children's programs. I, I don't know if any of that's in your thought process or not, but I just have to mention it. Thank you.
So last, we're on to our new projects. Nature was going to hit.
Well, as we talked about, a lot of public engagement, so our next project, 11th and K Street Improvements, we will be starting our public engagement and trying to figure out what exactly we want to do on those streets. So that'll be beginning week of May 1st.
First, yeah.
Yeah, so May 2nd. And then we'll be working on that, and we'll see where we go from there. So this is just initial phase, public engagement phase. Next one on the list is Reconnecting Arcata Project. I would say this is the most talked project in the last few months. We will not be starting this project until July 2nd, when we have a contract in place. For the first eight to 12 months, we will be working on public engagement and public partnership, and trying to engage community, and trying to see how best we can reconnect the Arcata. So just to clarify, I think there is a lot of misconception on Reconnecting Arcata Project. People believe that is just a highway lead and cap, but Reconnecting Arcata includes three sections of the Arcata. One is the Valley West area, which there's an island between 299 and 101. We need to reconnect that, and also the downtown portion and the southern portion. So there are three portions, and we are hopeful, in next six months, we'll be trying to get the people together and at least have a project in place, so which we can present to the Caltrans for the next phase of the project, which is called Project Initiation Document. So that's what we are working on. Next one is Frank Martin Color Replacement Project. This is just one color that's failing at the Frank Martin Court, and this, we're trying to replace that. Hopefully, this year, we have not, last year it was on the budget, but we could not have enough money to do the project. So this year, the goal is to do that project. Tank Four Rehab Project. This is the Tank Four at the Margaret Lane, which is right now empty, and it's very old. So we're trying So we're trying to rehab that Tank Four as a part of CIP project. So we'll be budgeting some additional funds in the next fiscal year to do some improvements to Tank Four.
And finally, Environmental Services added Mountain View Park as a new CIP project. Mountain View Park had the older playground equipment removed at the same time that Bloomfield Park was removed. We heard a lot of interest at that time from the neighborhood around Bloomfield of the interest in what's going to come next for the playground. We have heard less from the neighborhood around the Mountain View Park, but also because Greenview Park, which is an amazing accessible playground, is just a couple blocks away. But we see this as an opportunity coming up in the next year to engage the neighborhood to see if there could be a balance like that we struck at Bloomfield for potential improvements to that park west of, on the west end of 11th, west of Janes.
All right, I believe that's it. So just left open some time for any specific questions, if you have any.
That is a very thorough and exhaustive list. I'm very impressed. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I mean, yes, wow, and thank you. And so it's just to go through this piece by piece is, it's really cool and a little bit overwhelming, just all the work that happens in our community. And I know we've said this before, but you know, when you line us up with other towns our size, what we're accomplishing is pretty incredible. And, you know, we all are a team, and what we do or don't do reflects on one another. And I just want to sincerely thank all of you and your teams, because your dedication and your enthusiasm and hard work really elevates us too. So thank you for that.
And I think it's wonderful we know all the things you're doing, because if you're asked, why are this, that, we have a list. And now all of these could be used too as part of our whole measure that we're going to have, whatever the letter is.
OK, well, thank you so much. Some exciting things coming up, and just really looking forward to continuing to move forward off these exciting projects. And we will move on then to recommendations for the fiscal year. Is everybody still OK? Ready to go on?
Yes.
OK. Recommendations for fiscal year 2024-25, open space, parks and trails, special tax priority. And Emily, Environmental Services, going to give us staff report?
Great.
I'm glad you're feeling OK.
Apologies, I don't have much of a voice, so hopefully you can still hear me. So this hopefully is just a brief update on recommendations from our committees with a purview of open space, parks and trails for how best to utilize funding from the Open Space Parks Trails Special Tax, which was passed as Measure A in November of 2020. And as a reminder, that's a $37 per parcel tax across the city, and it generates about $168,000 per year. It has, it was really passed as an opportunity for the city to address challenges or opportunities that may arise for either completing city priority projects, open space acquisition, parks maintenance, being able to go after opportunities that require a little bit of effort before you get the larger grant. And I think so far, we've been able to utilize that funding to really meet that need. I think a big key project was completion of the final segment of the Ridge Trail, which we touched on in the CIP. Funding from this fund has also helped to augment gaps in funding for other priority projects, such as it really enabled us to construct the pump track at Redwood Park. It also contributed to the improvements at Bloomfield. We have in the community forest of managing 2,500 acres between the Arcata Track, Sunnybury Track and Jacoby Creek. We have a lot of legacy road, road and culvert and bridge repair needs has very much assisted the city in the management of the forest. It's helped secure river access at Carlson Park, and also has really helped us in fish monitoring and advancing restoration grants for Jolly Giant and Janes Creek. Right now, just as Councilmember Stillman spoke to flooding in the Jolly Giant area, funding from the Open Space Special Tax is helping the city apply for Cal OES Advanced Assistance Fund to plan for potential improvements to reduce flooding impacts and restoration opportunities on Jolly Giant and Janes. So this has been a very, very helpful fund for meeting the city and committee goals. And since, this is probably the third, this is the third year of recommendations to the council ahead of the next fiscal year budgeting. And when the ballot measure was passed, there was to be, you know, community oversight. And the process that we've developed is we recognize we already have three very, sorry, three very active committees, Parks and Rec, Wetlands and Creeks, Forest Management, that have purviews around the special tax. And so for the past three years, we've had those committees, as they do in their normal process, identify committee goals and see how that aligns with city council goals, and then choose two representatives from each of the committees to be part of an ad hoc group to not only make recommendations, see how we've spent Measure A money so far, but also have dialogue across committees to understand what other committees do and what their priorities are and how that implements on the ground. I think committee members that have participated have said it's really helped them get a bigger picture of what the city does. And together, the ad hoc group this year has made recommendations that are on your packet page 16. And, you know, they really recommend continuing to implement priorities from last year, two of which are improvements to the Margaret Lane Trailhead to make a ramp for much more easier access to the Sunnybury Forest for all non-motorized modes, as well as an alternate trail to Trail Nine in the main tract of the Arcata Community Forest to split faster, faster cycling from other uses. And so for this year, they're really recommending spending more on stewardship of what we have, so stewardship of our parks and the Arcata Marsh in particular, with replacing aging equipment at some of our smaller neighborhood parks like Cahill and Vinum. And then trying out hiring a new part-time position that would focus specifically in the marsh as a groundskeeper, doing work on the ground, but also collaborating with Friends of the Arcata Marsh to support volunteer efforts at the marsh. And FO may also be able to help support funding this position. It's kind of a pilot for, of our suggestion of trying out Measure A funding for a part-time position, but we do see a future where that could be funded with other appropriate funds. And then continuing our work to advance restoration in Jolly Giant and Janes, having some rehabilitation of our Jacoby Creek, Ganin Slough wildlife area, and then continuing on our forest improvements, bridge and culvert replacements. And then also maintaining a, an opportunity in the budget to act on kind of pre-acquisition support needs for those, as in the CIP, the land acquisition for sea level rise adaptation for when those opportunities come up. Sometimes it takes, you know, many years to cultivate some of those. So these are the recommendations, you know, that could be budgeted in the department's budget request for next fiscal year. Otherwise, would welcome if the council has questions or modifications to these recommendations.
So, I mean, I was thinking about Baton Rouge, and I would love to see that come back. It's been quite a while since we had that. And that really put the money towards the Ridge Trail. And I think because we did that twice, we were able to secure that money and made a difference. But I was just wondering if you have something else in mind that it could actually fund? You don't have to tell me right now, but you know, just think about it, because there are people that'd like to see us bring Baton Rouge back, you know. Debbie Farber-Bush actually coordinated that, and I think we could pull together some of the other people that were part of it. We could get probably, I don't want to be a cheerleader, but maybe you all do. And so, because I've already done that twice. So I think that, I just think, what could we, what is out there that you have a need for that Baton Rouge would make a difference for? So thank you for thinking about that. And just let me know if you ever come up with an idea. Any of you.
I just want to say, I really love the collaborative methods that you've described to come to these conclusions. I think that is kind of like the best case scenario of all of our committees working together in collaboration, and that's just wonderful oversight. And I love that idea of a part-time groundskeeper at the marsh. I feel like any kind of love we can show to the marsh as far as keeping things clean and safe down there is a very good idea.
We had a person who worked for, worked as staff at the Marsh Interpretable Center, who also did some of that work, but it makes it, but was free. He wasn't getting paid for it. But what it does is it really makes a connection for other people, and they know what's happening and what's going on with whatever it might be. And one of the things that the, some of the FO members have done, some of the board members and others, they've taken on being naturalists, and so they carry a, just like, well, they carry a bucket and pick up trash as they walk around and check on things and what's happening. So I think this would be part of that, and our, if you find that decision, they could wear their vest and the bucket and, you know, and see, and it'll be really valuable. And so I really appreciate you thinking of pushing that forward. It's something that's very much needed. Thank you.
Unfortunately, a lot of that trash can't fit into a bucket, so I continue to appreciate, like pack out, you know, just came from an HWA budget meeting where we're talking about allocating more money towards being able to facilitate those bigger scale cleanups. And so like keeping that in the forefront, because the marsh has been really problematic
All right, thank you. Go get some rest. Let's move on to future meetings.
Yeah, pull out your calendars.
Pull out your calendars. So let's first talk about...
I think we, I'll just share with the council, I think we have a couple of things. We have an ongoing goal, I think, of having a meeting with your committee commission chair. We did talk during goal setting about maybe holding that after the start of the fiscal year to talk about, here is our budget, and here are our goals. How can you help us with those? We also have not set any dates for an actual budget hearing. We can do those during your regular scheduled meetings, but typically, we try to have one budget meeting to go over a whole budget before it comes to your meeting. We do have, Juneteenth does fall on, if we just are kind of looking forward, we will have a meeting on May 1st, because we've got everybody here for that meeting. We will have a meeting on May 15th. We won't have Councilmember Schaefer. We, right now, are scheduled for a meeting on June 5th. We won't have Mayor Matthews for that one. And then June 18th is Juneteenth, so our MUNICO does not allow us to actually have a meeting on that day. So thinking about what you might want to do around sort of any kind of budget hearing and meetings in June, I think are probably the two top priorities right now.
Maybe it's the month we should take off.
No, no, no. I was thinking that maybe we meet in the middle and have a meeting on the 12th, if people are available for that. I'm sorry, it's my eighth grader's graduation. I'm not missing that.
Wait, the...
June 12th?
Is not your eighth grader?
No, no, the 5th. I have to miss the 5th and...
But that might be your graduation.
Well, yeah, so both, yeah, the 12th is, well, no, I could do it. That's, I don't, that's, I mean, our meetings are in the evening and...
So are we talking about having a meeting on the 5th and the 12th, or just...
Or not the 5th, but the 12th? Not the 5th, not the 19th, but the 12th instead?
It could be both. I mean, we've got right now, just kind of tentatively on the agenda, the June 5th meeting was actually going to be your general plan and gateway area, so we need all five of you for a meeting at some point. The other date that was thrown out was whether or not, because you've got five Wednesdays in May, if you've got like May 29th would also, or sometime during that week, might also be a good time to meet. We can, and then the other thing we had on what would be the June 5th meeting is stuff around your elections coming up. So, I mean, we could have a small agenda on the 5th with four of you that just doesn't include the large general plan and gateway items.
And then we still need a budget meeting too?
Right.
So what about...
So you're saying, I just want to see if I heard you correctly. On June 18th is, is, so we can't meet on the 19th? Is it a holiday?
It's Juneteenth. The 19th? Yeah, I mean, we could meet another day that week. We could have a special meeting on Monday or Tuesday or Thursday of that week, but we can't meet on the Wednesday.
I think we have to rethink June totally.
Yeah, I'm literally fine with anything except for the 5th or the 19th. I can make, oh, and the 15th, obviously.
Well, I think that, you know, to get some of our other items done, we could meet on the 5th with four of us, but to do general plan items, do you, but those and budget together sound very intense, and you don't want to do that. And so, I mean, I would maybe then, yeah, propose that May 29th, and then perhaps if we need to do budget before the beginning of July, I mean, we have like the 26th or the, that whole week too.
What happens if we do the 29th and we do the 12th? Is anyone here for the 12th?
That works for me. I'm not available.
I can do the 12th, it's fine.
I'm not available on the 29th. I mean, unless I can show up a little bit, I can come a little bit late if we do it on that day. I have something until 6:30. But I can either come late or I can not be here for that.
Well, if we do the general plan and the gateway, we would take the gateway areas first.
Ah, so you won't have to be here.
So that's a seven, and then do a seven to eight general plan?
That's on the 29th?
Is that all right?
That's great.
And we'll need to confirm with Kimberly that that works.
Yeah, that works for her.
All three of us for gateway.
So since we're really off schedule doing, doing this, it's going, we're going to have to really let people know that it's going to be hard. So we're going to, just from my understanding, we're going to do the 29th, which will start at 6, but we don't have to be here until 7, Stacy and I, something like that.
Correct.
And then we're going to do June 12th?
Well, you can have a small meeting on the 5th, but I won't be there. So I'd prefer, I'd prefer it to not be a budget meeting.
OK, I'm available. So I'm available on the, yeah, 29th, the 5th, the 12th, all the way through. I'm not traveling.
So we're going to do the 5th and the 12th?
And not the 19th?
No, the 29th.
The 29th of May, the 5th of...
The 29th of May, correct. The 5th of June, and then the 12th of June, and then that's it for the rest of June.
All right, we'll work everything into those three meetings.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's good. Don't be sorry. No, no, this is all scheduling. We have dates to work with. That is perfect.
I'm putting him in, 29th, the 5th and the 12th.
Thank you guys for being flexible.
At least we're meeting back to back. We don't have to worry. Every Wednesday, we will have a meeting for three weeks in a row.
That's right. Who doesn't love that?
And we'll make sure to check with Councilmember White and see if those work, and then we'll kind of finalize that, perhaps tomorrow even, we can get that locked down if possible. All right. And with, with that, I think we're good to adjourn, unless anybody has...
Well, what about the study session? Which one are we going to go for on that one?
I think we'll, let's wait until we get into July, August for that.
OK, that's fine. Just checking, because it's on our agenda.
Oh, perfect. OK. Good meeting, everybody. That was awesome. Thank you all for your staff reports. I appreciate it. Cheers.